For Unified School District Board of Education to order. Welcome to our members from the Board of Education to City Hall. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hodgkins absent. Mayor Protem Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Board Member Reed is absent. Board Member Sims Moten.
Here.
Board Member Katz.
Here.
Board Member Uyoa.
Here.
And Board President Parker.
Great, thank you. And I've asked Mayor Protem to read number three.
Translation of today's meeting in Spanish is available to the public. Please indicate if you would like translation. Para la reunión de esta noche hay interprete disponible para traducción al español. Por favor indique si desea los servicios de interpretación.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, public comment. I don't have any public comment speaker slips. All right, okay. Fantastic, but you were going to speak on an item or are you? Okay, you're speaking on an item, fantastic. So number five is statement and purpose for the joint meeting. And I'll just start again to welcome some very new members from the Board of Education, including our newest superintendent. This is the first time we've had this joint meeting with all of you here. And very excited to have you here. We do this once a year, as you probably know by now. And I always personally find that there's more to talk about than one would think upon first blush. But, you know, the general public wants just to get things done and don't necessarily know when things happen, if it's a city issue or a school board issue, and it really doesn't matter. So having these joint meetings to talk about issues of mutual interest, I think, is very valuable. And so I appreciate you being here and taking time out of your busy schedules to do so. And our Board of Education President Parker, if you'd like to say anything.
I will just add that thank you for having us. We always appreciate these meetings. And it's fun to have it here in the chambers for the first time because we're usually over at your Garden Street location. So it's fun to be in this older building, too. But what we appreciate is the vast majority of our students, we have about 15,000 students, vast majority of them live within the city of Santa Barbara. And we appreciate the work that we do together because we know that a city that focuses on healthy families and healthy schools and the continuum of support and education from birth all the way through adulthood to retirement is a city that's going to keep moving forward and making progress into the 21st century. So we really appreciate the connection because there's a lot that we can do for families together. So thank you.
Great. All right, and with that, if you could read item number six.
Item six, city's approach to community-oriented policing.
Great. And Chief Luna, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, and the Board of Education. So first of all, I'm Lori Luna. For those that you don't know, of you that don't know, I've been here a whole nine months, which I think is just a little longer than your superintendent. But I come from San Diego with 27 and a half years of experience with the San Diego Police Department. So I'm super excited to be here and be in front of you today. I'm going to give you a quick staffing update from us and just a conceptual vision of how we police on some of our priorities. I'm going to give you an update on our community-oriented policing philosophy and, I think, more importantly, how we're policing under the model of 21st century policing. I'm going to talk to you a little about our community engagement measures, as well as our very specific detailed school resource officer and youth services interactions. So this is where we are today. Our authorized strength for sworn police officers is 142. We have 141 of those positions filled, which is quite a bit more than we had a year ago. We had 126 a year ago at this time. But of those 141, we have 24 that are in still some phase of training, which means they aren't boots on the ground and extra resources that we can allocate to some of our specialty positions. But I'm excited to say about six months ago, we were able to fully assign another school resource officer. The last time we had a full-time school resource officer was 2015 and she's, I'm sorry, 2014. And she is Christina Marshall, who's here in the room with me today. But about six months ago, we brought in Officer Trozan, who now has that role. So this is just six months of activity I wanted to show you, our calls for service and responses in the city, just to give you a quick overview of, we're busy and it's everywhere. And I wanted to highlight, this is where our proactive enforcement is and that it aligns very clearly with some school corridors. So that's where our officers, in their free time when they're not being reactive, are responding and enforcing things proactively. So just to give you a history lesson, if you will, it's pretty clear, we used to have a pretty traditional policing style in the United States, which was more reacting to calls for service. Not to say we don't do that to some capacity, but 1979 Herman Goldstein brought community-oriented policing to the United States, which meant we started focusing on reaction, moving to action. And that is a community-based approach and a problem-centric approach. And I'm proud to say that is the philosophy I came up in within the San Diego Police Department in 1988. I knew nothing other than that. And I've used some pretty funny examples of how it took me to learn the theory, moving into a practical skill. And it meant that I was making a fool out of myself, knocking on doors, asking neighbors how I could solve their drug and their gang problems, when they kept telling me that what was most interesting to them is if I took care of the chop shop behind their houses so they could get some sleep. And I was a young officer focused on, let's go after the big stuff. Let's go, let's go. So it took me until the fourth door, where I actually heard the same thing repeated that made me realize, oh, yes, I have just as much of a responsibility to take care of that for them so their quality of life can be improved. Took me a little while, but I just wanted to illustrate that point. So here we are today. 21st century policing is something that President Obama created a task force to respond to some uncertainty in our nation. And there are six different pillars that have been identified. And these were created to strengthen community policing and trust amongst law enforcement in the communities they serve. And the first one, which is super important, is obviously building trust and legitimacy. And this really reinforces our actions to nurture that trust that builds to legitimacy on both sides of the police and citizen divide, if you will. And it really, I think, in philosophy moves us from a warrior mindset, that our officers have to be ready to respond and become a warrior. But more importantly, they need to be guardians in our community as well. I apologize if I can't see. I broke my glasses. But the second pillar is that policy and oversight. And what's most important here is that our policies need to reflect our community values. And something that we are going to be employing in the next, I'm going to say, six months or so, is a citizens advisory group that is going to represent our community values. And I'm going to be able to have their ear and hear about that. But in addition to an adult version, I'm going to engage a youth advisory board as well. Technology and social media, this, we know, technology's moving and we've been a little slow to respond. And we're going to be working on strengthening our social media presence because it really leads to proving our transparency in our actions and explaining what we do a little more. But I want to use an example. We've been building trust in our community and working very closely with some of our community activists. And to use an example, obviously, our immigration concerns in the community have created quite a bit of fear. And because we have been working closely with community activists and knowing that this fear was paralyzing our community, and most of it was based on misinformation, we were able to engage our community activists in a meeting and came up with an idea of creating an application on WhatsApp that was meant to reduce the false information that has been paralyzing our community. So we have well over 250 members on that. And the great part for us was, we were one of the partners at the table with them. Our community activists are the ones that had further trust and tentacles into all sorts of pockets in the community. And what we've seen is there's misinformation that's gone out, very specifically in one incident. It took us about 20 minutes to dispel. We have the Mexican consulate and contacts from ICE, and we're able to immediately say that's all false. Because of that trust and legitimacy that we've developed, it's been very valid and worthwhile for us to, very successful, I should say, in general. The fourth pillar, community policing and crime prevention. And this is one that I like to reinforce. Policing is a shared responsibility. And I think we need to remind people that safety needs to be co-produced. If we're not really engaged in our community and basically listening to them and using them to their capacity, we're never going to solve a problem. Nothing is just a criminal matter for us to deal with. Training and education, that's something that is significantly highlighted with the things that are occurring in this world. Our officers these days need to take on, like I said, the technology issues, terrorism, some more community challenges and things of that. So we need to continually expand and identify that there are things that we need to continually grow with as our society grows. Officer safety and wellness is something that we all need to focus on as well. Self-care is something, if we do not have an officer taking care of themselves, there's no way they can take care of our community and our people in this community. So we are expanding those programs as well internally. So some of the things we have done internally over the last several months is we created a Voices program that basically is a meaningful exchange in facilitated group dialogue. And we're doing this with our brand-new recruits. We're starting our second evolution with it, with eight new recruits that just, I'm sorry, 10 new recruits that just got out of the academy. It's been something that, for our new officers that are millennials and a lot of times haven't had some difficult conversation, it has given them a safe space to ask tough questions. And we've seen great results. We created some affinity cards that are like the old-school baseball cards that have been designed to humanize our officers. And this is something I want to throw out because we have a larger vision, that these videos right now highlight an officer personally. And, you know, they talk about their fears, their favorite ice cream. And we've seen a lot of our youth enjoying those and identifying them. They can pull up the video with a QR code on their phone. So it's, you know, incorporated the, definitely the technology that's made it fun. But I know a lot of you remember the DARE programs and things like that, where we used to do some very structured instruction in schools. We think that this platform, should you wish to pursue it, would be great to get our officers in your classrooms, again, virtually by way of videos. So want to throw that out if you see a use. We recently partnered with Santa Barbara City College to create a post-certified professional development opportunity for our officers, but it involves critical thinking exercises that basically discuss issues that officers and students' lives, excuse me, that their lives on a daily basis, that they engage on a daily basis. Community conversations, we've met with several of our congregations and we're having some key discussions on hopes in our community. And it's been bridging a lot of healing that's needed to occur from years past. And like I said, we are creating the advisory boards. And then we recently brought in a public engagement manager as well, who's going to continue to help us embrace the opportunities to engage the public. So our school resource officer right now covers all of our city campuses. We have one officer that tries to do it all. And they do a great job with campus visits, patrol. They investigate all the cases with a school nexus. They respond to calls for service with suicidal juveniles or juveniles refusing to go to school. And then any calls that originate from the campuses from UOL. They also attend the School Attendance Review Board and participate in that process. And I think what's most important is they create those non-law enforcement contacts and opportunities to engage with students. And I know Christina, for example, was coaching softball for a while. So it's far-reaching in regards to their outreach. And then they work closely with our Police Activities League that also creates environments where our officers are mentors and there's opportunities to have positive interactions with our officers. We have tutoring available, music, dance, sports programs offered weekly, and they even do camping trips. Our Explorer program is something that's been, I think, for me, very exciting to see. I've talked to each and every one of them, and they all want to be police officers. So it's a great mentoring funnel for us. It's a strategic approach, for sure. But they volunteer a lot of hours to our community, and we're truly building their leadership skills by engaging them and having our officers around as mentors. And they recently, actually, ours went to a large competition and came back with five awards. So they are highly decorated here in our city. So with that, I will close it out and leave it open to questions for you.
I will say, the Explorers were, they had the tough job of keeping the five-year-olds in all ages away from the extravaganza before the countdown at Chase Preach Pond Park. And I'm sure at Bonnet Park, they might have been there as well. So they're all over the place. So that was quite fun. Any questions for the chief or comments or anything like that? Mr. Hart?
Well, I appreciate this presentation. It's a little different than what you gave the council just a few days ago. And I think it weaves together some really good thoughts. It occurred to me when we were here the other day and you had the 12 officers, how young they all were. And maybe that's because I'm old. But there's an opportunity, I think, because they are truly peers in an age sense with the students in school. And I, you know, just want to plant that seed with you, Lori, the idea that they could somehow interact more sooner in their career, perhaps, than they would naturally going through a training process with students at the high schools. Because they are so close in age, that all the things that you talked about, the affinity cards and those conversations and things like that, really are a great way to knit together the community. And it just feels like it's the perfect timing for something like that. We haven't had almost 20 new officers that this age group coming into the force at one time, I don't think, ever, probably in the history of the department. And it's a unique opportunity to have that connection between young students and young officers as seeing themselves as peers, not as authority figures and older relationship. And that's something to think about. I don't know what the answer to it is, but it occurs to me, this is something we should think about.
And I also recall, some of them are Don alums. So they're Santa Barbara High alums from probably five, six years ago, right? So that's something else there. Any other comments? Circa?
Madam Mayor, thank you. So Chief, at the extravaganza at the Westside Boys and Girls Club, thank you, Mayor, for mentioning that. One of your officers, I think the last name was Ramirez, and he spoke Spanish. And we took pains to introduce him to the Spanish-speaking moms and the children. And we really have started a new era of different kind of police relations with the Latino community in the city of Santa Barbara. I noticed that a lot of your officers spoke Spanish and even some other languages. How wonderful. It really makes a difference. And gang activity is down 75% in our city, and it's really low, actually. It's, we're keeping it under control countywide. I give a lot of credit to your department for participating in the South Coast Task Force on youth safety. But we have to continue doing those prevention programs. And when a youngster meets a police officer in a friendly setting where there's chocolate and music and good feelings, then I really hope that we're past the era of Ferguson and a couple of years ago, when there was so much negativity around our police officers. We don't need that. And that's not what's happening here in Santa Barbara. So when you send your officers to community events like that, it's very meaningful, to the little ones. We'll see that bearing fruit as they grow up. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of things. One is just on the SRO. We last had one in 2014, but then we had actually a long gap there where we didn't have one for a number of years. And then we were so fortunate to have one for a short amount of time. And I'm thrilled that there's one back again because what we see, it's been always interesting to me because I do hear of other communities where, you know, parents are really concerned about a school resource officer on campus because that means that there's going to be all this scrutiny of students and it's a negative. Whereas we have seen in our community, both with the county and with the city of Santa Barbara, that these school resource officers are, they build relationships with students and they lower tension and they just, it's been a huge positive for our high schools in particular. And so I'm really pleased that we have another person back in that position because it is a real positive. And I think seen differently, there are other communities where, you know, you'll see videos online of how positive it is to have a school resource officer out there. So I know it's not unique, but I'm grateful that we are part of that cadre where it's a real positive for our schools. My question is, something that's always on our radar, is of course, outlying school shooting incidents, terrorism possibilities. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about training that your department goes through, thinking about school shootings on campus or unexpected terrorist event, that kind of thing. I hope that that never happens here, but I would like to know that we're prepared for it.
Yes, we go through regular training for our officers, but I think what's most important is we spend a lot of resources training our community as well. In fact, some of our city resources got some training today. But it's something we take seriously and our officers are trained to react. And I think what's most important to realize is they're working closely with schools to create plans so they know how to react and to understand how we're going to come into this situation. But we are committed to it. We conduct two trainings with businesses a year. At least that's a cycle we're trying to get on, on a bigger vision. So everybody understands our response and not only what we expect of them as businesses or organizations, but more importantly, how we're going to come into it. But we are committed. We recognize the rising numbers in some places of those occurrences.
Madam Mayor and President Parker, thanks, Chief. Thanks for bringing up that example about WhatsApp and how you're communicating with the key people in the community, with something we've been focused on a lot in terms of the fear that people have and the rumors that fly like crazy. And the district has done a good job, I believe, in getting the word out, doing a handful of community events at schools. And actually, the one that I attended, one of your officers attended as well. And that was really important, that he was there. And he knew a lot of the families that were there. And they look to him for that authority. So I just, I know we don't track it at the district, but I know statewide, almost a million kids in public schools have one or more parents that are undocumented. And so the fear that you just have to put yourself in the shoes of those kids, thinking, while I'm at school, something could happen to my parent. And so we're trying to get the word out that those emergency cards need to be, you know, really up to date with good information so that this district knows who to contact. But I just wanted to put that out there with our new public information officer here. If there's a way for that WhatsApp to be expanded or if there to be just a communication link, and perhaps there already is with your SRO, but just to, I think that would be a really key ingredient, for the rumors to dispel, but also when there is something and there very well could be some kind of thing that we need to worry about and just remembering that those kids are, you know, in our care and how we can make sure that we are communicating with them as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
And I must say, Board Member Katz, your school, local school, is engaged in that WhatsApp with us.
Oh, great, perfect. Good to know. Thanks.
Great, all right, thank you. Why don't we then move on to item number seven?
Item seven, report on joint city-school district programs.
All right, switching gears here. Hello?
All right, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council and the Board of Education. I'm Rich Hannah, the Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here today joined with Debbie Badger, the Program Director for After-School Expanded Learning Programs, and Lito Garcia, the Principal at Santa Barbara Junior High. So for today's presentation, we're just going to walk you through after-school programs. We've got our traditional after-school programs, our after-school sports programs. We'll do a summary just so you get a sense of how many kids we're serving and the type of resources we're spending. Then we'll kind of transition into speak a little bit about the Park Ranger Program, then answer any questions that you may have at the end. So briefly, just before we dive into the presentation, the after-school programs, I believe, is a perfect example of a joint-use partnership. It's where both the school district and the city of Santa Barbara comes together to share resources, funding, staff, to keep kids engaged in positive after-school activities and programming. Programs that ultimately may keep them out of the purview of the Santa Barbara Police Department that just spoke here earlier, but also provide them with opportunities to move on throughout their career. When we talk numbers in this presentation, I just want to point out that we're not talking about duplicated participation because we want to do a correlation at the end. So many of the kids that we identify in these programs that we provide will participate in multiple sessions or all of the sports throughout the full academic school year. And then lastly, in your written report, we talked briefly about our community partners. We're not going to include that in today's presentation, but they really serve a greater number of students beyond what we're actually providing on campus and in our programs that, again, keep kids engaged in really positive activities after the regular school day. So just quickly, as an orientation, there are two traditional after-school programs. We have the AOK, the After-School Program, which is provided by the district. The city of Santa Barbara provides the RAP program, which is provided by the Parks and Recreation Department. Both programs serve first through sixth-grade students. And at this time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Badger to speak to the AOK and ACES programs.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak today on my, one of my largest passions is the AOK program. The AOK program has been, the collaboration with the city has been in existence for 18 years, and it's a very successful collaboration. Matter of fact, I know that Councilwoman Mario made a comment on our video that tells the story of after-school, that she, that there were probably other city programs that might want to have the same engagement that we have. I know that across the state, people come to me all the time and ask, how did this happen? That it's a model that many programs around the state would love to have. We do have, we actually, the district actually serves a total of 1,050 students total in TK all the way through eighth grade. AOK is our first through sixth-grade program that is funded by Prop 49 funds, ACES, After-School Enrichment Funds. And 10 years ago, the proposition allowed for $7.50 per day per child. We have not seen an increase in the 10 years. And I have to tell you, the collaboration with the city has been so successful, and I appreciate the city and our 22 other partners for wrapping their arms around AOK because we would not be able to provide the services that we do. We almost have a one-for-one in terms of indirect, as well as donations, to our $1 million grant that we receive on an annual basis. We also have a program over at Lacumbra where we have seventh and eighth graders. And all of our programming is intentional. The intent behind Prop 49 was to see a reduction in lack of attendance in the school day, as well as to help move students to the next level academically. I have to tell you, parents come to us in AOK and say, if our children were not in AOK, they may not, they probably would not attend school. As I said, the curriculum that, you walk, well, let me back up. When you walk onto a campus of 100, three of the program leaders are district employees, and we provide the academics. Two of the program leaders are city parks and rec. They all wear the same shirts. You would not know one from the other. All of our program leaders have a minimum of 60 hours of intentional training every year. It's really important that we continue to observe, both at the city level as well as at the district level, to be able to really support all of our program leaders. Again, we're located on Fortunately, not only do we have City, City Parks and Rec support, but I am, we are really blessed to be able to have support from the library, our city library. I know several of the council, council members, as well as the mayor, has attended the, the graduations for our little academic second graders that are learning how to read, as well as we have hosted several family literacy nights where the library has come and participated as well as with United Way and the school district to provide learning opportunities on reading for parents with their children and, and provide a book. We also at Lacombra have a relationship with the City Park, with the City Parks and Rec in terms of the sports program, which Mr. Garcia will be, will be addressing in a few minutes. Again, our program is intentional, both at the city level as well as at the, at the district level. I have to say, I'm really excited at the school district and how flexible they have been as times have changed and we've moved to Common Core. I had a few, a few years ago requested that they be, that all of the City Parks and Rec employees be Spark trained. Spark is sports, play and active recreation for kids. It's Common Core aligned and approved by the Department of Education. Oh, because, and I really do not think that this would have happened if we, if, if we did not have the relationship with the City Parks and Rec. But last year, we were dash certified, Distinguished After-School Health, which is legislation that Senator Jackson proposed three years ago. And it stands for Distinguished After-School Health Certification. It's for two years and it assures that we are moving our students into healthy patterns of, of physical activity and hopefully they will be able to carry on. We guarantee that there is parent education, that there's nutrition education. I asked the city to include at the beginning of every one of their curriculums, that they include five to 10 minutes on Mondays in terms of nutrition education. So our relationship with the city has been both favorable and I treasure it with, with all of my heart because I believe that we have the program that we have based on our collaboration with the city, which is our, which is our main partner, as well as the other 22 partners that we have in the community. I also want to share too, the relationship as our new police chief mentioned, the Police Activities League every year provides a dinner, a winter holiday dinner for some of our lowest socioeconomic students. They go out and they, the students actually go out, the PAL students actually go out and they purchase gifts and then the police officers also are there and they are serving all of the families that attend. And this past year, we had approximately 180 AOK family members that were at the, at the winter holiday dinner. And it was really interesting, but we, they, PAL also provided transportation for those who didn't have transportation from certain schools to the activity. And when I had the students actually send, create thank you notes for the students, we had several of them that actually drew a picture and said, I love police. And just their visibility with the families and with the students, it really helps to mend any issues that may, that may arise. Again, on behalf of the school district and on behalf of also too, I know all the staff, we really thank the city for their relation, for their relationship with AOK.
Okay, that's kind of hard to follow. So Ms. Badger's being pretty modest here. The department runs a RAP program, Recreation After-School Program, and we really try to emulate this program and a lot of the fundamental curriculum that the AOK program has. It's slightly different. It's a fee-based program. We run it at four local schools, so we're currently, we're at Adams, Monroe, Washington and Roosevelt Schools. The fees are very modest. We have a drop-in daily pass. We have 10 visit pass options or an entire session. If you were to buy the 30-session trip, which gets you the entire school week through the entire month, it works out to about $5 per day for two to three hours of structured after, after-school activities. The types of activities, again, like we tried to emulate the AOK program as we provide enrichment and recreation after, activities after school. So when the kids get released, we provide supervised outdoor play. We do some form of scholar time, whether it's homework assistance or just keeping the kids helped, assisted with any sort of homework and reading. We then transition to a structured activity, whether it's crafts, sports or some other curriculum, and then we send the kids home safely. The department also administers the Elementary After-School Sports Program. And I just wanted to point out some of the benefits from the after-school sports programs that I think both myself and Mr. Garcia could agree on. Parents might say that the benefits of sports is that kids come home so tired they eat and go straight to bed, hopefully after doing their homework. I would kind of contend that the kids, you know, learn, learn physical fitness, they're engaged in physical fitness, they're taught basic sports techniques, things that they can take on and use through their high school careers into their college careers. Maybe some of these future up-and-comers go professional athletes. They learn sportsmanship, camaraderie and school pride. I think all of those things are key to an after-school program in and above your traditional after-school programs. So the department offers the after-school sports program for the elementary grades. Again, it's third through sixth grades. We do it at 16 local schools. 10 of those are district schools. The district schools get to compete for free, there's no charge. The six other schools are typically charter schools or other schools in the Hope District that have kind of learned about this program. They don't have that opportunity to engage their kids in this camaraderie teamwork and, and expose them, so they've joined our sport leagues. We offer three sport leagues after school. We start the fall semester with our flag football, then we transition into blacktop basketball, and then we finish the school year with our soccer leagues. One of the great things that we're, we're blessed to be able to do is our after-school flag football, finish their season at La Playa Stadium under the lights. They have a tournament, so they get to play on the big field, although we kind of go sideways. Under the lights, so they get into this kind of tournament to finish their season. Mr. Garcia at Santa Barbara Junior High gives us his basketball courts to conduct most of the programming. We have a tournament there at the end of our blacktop basketball. And then to finish the soccer season, we do the same thing down at Dwight Murphy. So these kids get, you know, participating in the after-school sports activities. They practice once a week, they have one game a week. The season lasts eight to 10 weeks. Some of the kids are in the after-school programs that we talked about, whether it be AOK or RAP, or they're just kids in those schools that want to participate in after-school activities. And this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Garcia.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about our four junior highs, Gleta Valley, Lacalina, Lacumbre and, and Santa Barbara Junior High and the junior high sports leagues that we are able to have offered for several years now. And as someone who's born and raised here in Santa Barbara, sports were a big part of my youth from age five all the way through my graduation from Santa Barbara High. So I understand intimately what an impact sports can have on our students' lives, a very positive impact. So to give you a brief description of the programs that we offer for students during the school year, we run five-week seasons. So the first week, there's four days of practice, kind of get the students oriented to the particular sport that we're offering at that time. And then the following weeks, they will practice three days a week and have one game. And we compete against each other, so the four junior highs. So today, let's see, I think we're at, Santa Barbara Junior High is at Lacumbre. Go Condors. And Gleta Valley is at, at Lacalina. And we'll rotate, so we'll always get an opportunity to have home games and away games and, and all four schools will, will compete against each other. And the fifth week culminates in a, kind of a championship week where we'll put the top two teams against each other and then have a third and fourth place game as well. We offer girls soccer, boys soccer, girls basketball, boys basketball, lacrosse coed, volleyball coed, flag football coed, track and field coed. It's open to every single student on our campus. It's free to them. We appreciate the collaboration with the city to help fund this. All students play, every single one of them. And we have students out there who are playing at a club level, very high level. And then we have students who have never participated in organized sports before. And they're out there representing their school, but more importantly, they're out there having fun. And there will be times where a school will not have enough players to put a whole team together. And so if a school comes over and, I'll use basketball as an example, a team shows up and for maybe, maybe they have nine players. So they've got a full team and then almost a full team. And the other team has 11. They'll take one of those students and come over so that they can make two teams. And we've never had students say, I'm not going to play with them because they're not part of my school. They want to play, whatever sport it is. And so just also building that sense of community within Santa Barbara has, has been wonderful to see. It's our teachers and other staff from our schools who are our coaches. I have to mention Scott Brennan, he's a PE teacher at my school. He is the director over after-school sports and just does an incredible job. He is also a water pole, water polo referee within Santa Barbara. So he has all of these connections to referee organizations. So for our games, we get adults who are reffing at AYSO or adult leagues. And so they're bringing in that professionalism to our games as well. So kids are getting a wonderful experience and, and as you can see by the numbers there, 453 of our students are, are participating in after-school sports. And we have some kids who, you know, I'm just interested in basketball and they play and they're good. And we have other students, they want to play in whatever we can offer. And, and so they're out there and, you know, lacrosse is a growing sport, but it's great to see kids out there developing their skills with that and seeing some similarities maybe between soccer or, we don't play contact lacrosse, so the, the football piece, you know, kind of takes a sidestep to that. But again, to see boys and girls and, and again, because of the various sports levels, but also demographically very diverse as well. True representation of, of Santa Barbara on our fields and, and courts.
All right. So we promised you a summary and we were giving you unduplicated numbers for a reason. The numbers that we've come up with all of the programs that we provide collectively as a joint use program here, come up to about a little over 2,500 students. When we looked at the, the academic school year for the junior highs and the, and the elementary schools where we actually conduct these programs, we had a total of, I think it was 6,300s for the academic year, 2015, 2016. So we were, we estimate that we're serving 40% of the kids just in the programs that we talked about today. And I would add that many of the programs that our community partners also provide would push this number well up over, over 50%. And those are like the pony baseballs and kids that are doing independent PE and things like that. So they are engaged in positive after-school activities, but not a true reflection of this great joint use agreement that we have. When you look at the agreements that the district and, and the city entertain every year and enter into, we spend well over $1.3 million serving youth in after-school programs, keeping them engaged in positive activities. And that's something that really is kind of a, something that everybody should be proud about up there on the dais. We feel very proud about it. We're proud to provide these programs in our community. And there's a lot of staff time and, and staff resources and things that go into this that are not reflected in that 1.3 number. So I, I think everybody should pat themselves on the back. And as promised and not forgotten, the other collaboration that we have with the district is the department provides the Park Ranger Program. So we provide the campus security year-round, security services. We provide that seven days a week. We typically do evenings, weekends and holidays. We average about 10 hours per week across the campuses. The patrol services include checking and securing facilities. Last, in the 2015, 2016 school year, we had, I think there was 15 broken windows and doors that had been busted ajar and the Rangers are the first people to, to determine that. They call the police department, they notify the principals so they can be prepared when they show up for school on Monday. We also enforce regulations and issue citations, things as simple as parking citations, reporting graffiti, removing individuals from campuses, believe it or not, kids skate on campus after the school day and on weekends. So we enforce that.
Not at Santa Barbara Junior High.
Not at Santa Barbara Junior High. They also apparently swim in Santa Barbara High School pool after hours on the weekends and on holidays and we enforce that. But really, I think what's most important about the Park Ranger Program is they work with the principals and the administration to make sure whatever their needs are, whatever they need on campus are their priorities when they're on campus doing these patrol services. And they work directly with the Santa Barbara Police Department and the Fire Department if additional resources are needed. And with that, that concludes our presentation. We truly are better together and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Before we do that, we do have a public comments speaker here, Charlie Thrift from our youth council.
Is it easier if you do the questions first?
No, I'm, I'm at, you come on up. Now's your chance. Welcome.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and members of the school board. I'm Charlie Thrift. I'm the Chair of the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Hi, and I'm Jensen and I'm the treasurer of the youth council.
And we just wanted to introduce ourselves and sort of say that the youth council is here and ready to support in any way that you all see fit. We want to make schools and just the rest of the community safe and so that's sort of why we're here today. We also wanted to mention a few projects that we're doing. And in the past, we've done a lot of projects regarding anti-bullying and especially anti-cyberbullying. For those, we've done in county and we've also gone to LA County to do some of these projects. And we've also focused on some parent components of educating parents on social media because there is sort of that generational divide that we've seen with that. And we're also in the midst of a new project that we're starting.
Yeah, so, and our new project is the Alma Project, which stands for Adolescent Leaders' Modeling Acceptance. And the end goal of that is to provide a safer school space for undocumented teenagers within our community.
Yeah. And this, this project also focuses on students who have undocumented parents and so we know that's a whole different, but similar set of problems and issues that we can sort of look to fix. But I think that's pretty much it for our presentation. I would add that if you have any concerns for the youth council, I would say direct them to Councilwoman Murillo. She is our excellent liaison, so she's awesome. Yeah. Thanks.
And your Alma Project just got a grant, if I remember.
Yeah, we just got a grant for about $1,800 from the Youth Making Change Board.
So they write grants too. That's great. Thank you so much and thank you for being here today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Great. All right. So now it's back to the dais. Is that, Mr. Dominguez, is that your light or?
That's me.
Okay.
So thank you all for the great presentation and for the work you do. This is really exciting to see the difference you're making in the lives of these kids, their families in our community. So, so major kudos. I taught high school for a year and I knew how important it was to have, have an outlet for all that energy, of course, being a high schooler myself at one point. And, and one week I went and subbed at an elementary school and I think I was the only male teacher on that campus. And so when I went out on the basketball court, so many young elementary school boys ran over to the court and they just didn't have male mentors in their lives. And so it was, it was really touching. So to see these programs where we have coaches and staff to really help some of these students is great. So I noticed that one of the programs had increasing enrollment of 11%, which is great. Another one dropped 17%. Is there anything we can do as a council or a school board to, to prop up these numbers?
Councilmember Dominguez, I believe the program you're referring to that had the drop was the Elementary After-School Sports Program. And the challenge with that is by sheer nature, we practice one day a week and we have one game a week. And so finding talented, dedicated, hourly employees at a wage rate of about $13 per hour to commit to that with other school commitments and maybe other job offers is difficult to have that consistency in the program. One of the things that makes the junior high program so successful is they run the program with their, their teachers and their staff and they take that straight on to the after-school campus. And there may be an opportunity for that in the future, but ultimately it, it comes down to if we could do more practices and more games on the schools and give those hourly employees more hours, we'd probably have a increase in the number of participations.
Is there, I'm curious, what's the baseline? So if the participation decreased by 17%, is that partly because elementary school population is dropping or no?
That's not the correlation. Sometimes a school, recently Harding School, I think it was two years ago or during this period of time, actually did a field renovation, so they didn't participate in all in our flag football program. So that can also be a reason. Sometimes it's just having a motivated person to go out there and recruit the kids and be the Pied Piper and be there every day and, and get these kids excited to participate in one sport after the other. But I don't think it's a reflection on the school population trending down.
Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, it just occurs to me that, that maybe it connects what I said earlier about with the new police officers and that the potential for them to, to be volunteers in, in that capacity as a coach. I know that there are some athletes in that group that, I don't know if that works with your model and whether you could be open to that kind of change, but it's something to think about. I think there's some people there that want to be leaders in the community and that would be something that seems like a real natural for them to be involved in the campuses with the kids.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you so much for this presentation. And I, I didn't realize quite how spoiled we were until I had, I have friends who live in neighboring counties actually, talking about their struggles because there was no on-campus after-school care for their elementary students. Some of the schools will have smaller AOK programs that are not necessarily affiliated with their city. But then that is really for low socioeconomic families. If you're a working parent who is not low socioeconomic but not wealthy either, they often were in a bind or had very limited off-campus choices where they had to put their kids in vans, traveling places. And so I, I was floored. I was like, oh, I thought this was the way it was everywhere, right? So thank you. I mean, it makes a huge difference for our families. I want to speak specifically to the RAP program. I benefited, my children all benefited from the RAP program. And I particularly appreciated that it was on a Title I campus that was low socioeconomic. This was Adams School. And one of the things that, you know, as board members we're always aware of, our staff are always aware of and concerned about is families that segregate, self-segregate away from our elementary schools in particular, where, you know, they make decisions about where they're going to go to school. And a lot of it is based on, on race, class, socioeconomics. And we need to think carefully as a city and as a school district how we support that and how we create divide. So for example, as a working parent who is not low socioeconomic, if I had younger children now and I wanted to have them attend their neighborhood school, if it were, say, Harding, for example, I would really have to think hard about whether I could do that because there is no on-campus after-school care that my child could attend there. There are four schools where there is that. And so those are going to be those four schools as a working parent where I would really be thinking about putting my child because it's not there. And so I think it's fantastic because I, you know, when I first came into the district, it was only at two schools. And, and so I was so thrilled when it ended up being obviously at my own school, but then it expanded, essentially it doubled in size. But I know that there's greater need. And I know that every, at every school that it's not, that it becomes a limiting factor of the parents that cannot or will not bring their children there because this is not there for them. And so I just want to be sure that that's on our radar as we think about it. And, you know, sometimes we judge families, but frankly, a lot of times it's just for really practical reasons that they make decisions about where, where their kids go to school. And one of them is what after-school care is there. So I commend this program, I think it's fantastic. I obviously think it'd be wonderful to expand it further.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just piggybacking on both questions in terms of enrollment and access, I just want to get clear, and I know Debbie's explained this to me before, so I apologize. Like where AOK is and where RAP is and just to make sure that we're, are there, beyond Harding, are there other campuses where there aren't options?
The only camp, well, there's, there's care on every campus provided by Santa Barbara Unified School District. Except for our littlest ones at Santa Barbara Community Academy because we couldn't keep that program sustainable. But some LEAs are able, are, drive how they're going to accept students into the ACES programs. We, even though we're located on Title I campuses, we, we don't, I mean, we don't ask for any proof of income. And if parents wish to send their students, even though 85% of all of our AOK families are so, low socio-economically disadvantaged, but we go ahead and we, we allow them in. But I do know that there are programs in the state that require, you know, they either have to have, have the free and reduced program, either free or reduced. And, but we don't at all. Adams is the only one that has a combination of AOK and RAP and both of them are full.
Yeah, that, so are there wait lists? I know for kindergarten there is at Roosevelt because I experienced it. But, but are there wait lists for the other programs?
Right now, we have a few on the waitlist at Adams, but our biggest waitlist of 25 is at Franklin. And we actually are funding, the district is actually funding an extra staff person to make up the difference from last year's music program.
And I would just add that I'd say for the after-school sports, at least the elementary and the RAP program, we have room to grow more participation in those programs. We're just working out how to grow that effectively and still maintain ratios. So when we grow by three or four kids on a given day that we weren't planning for, we have to send staff resources there. So if we could get 10 more kids to sign up at the same time, we would expand the program and staff it and we'd be happy to provide that service.
So sorry to get so specific, but these are the conversations I'm in the midst of right now. And so at Harding, there's just AOK?
There's, there's the year-round after-school program funded by the Early End Support Division. And then there's also AOK. And then their parent enrichment classes. And as I said, we don't discriminate whether, whether people are on the free and reduced program or not. Anybody's entitled to come.
But there might be the perception that it's not for those families. Is that sort of was President Parker's?
We try to break that perception. Anybody on, that's enrolled on campus isn't, is, can be enrolled in the AOK program. And getting back to Councilman Dominguez, I just want to let you know that in our AOK program, we have more than 50% of our program leaders are males. And about 80% of them speak Spanish. And it's been really exciting, but since I took over six years, seven years ago, 12 of our program leaders have gone, gone on to teach at RAP schools. So it's also another way to start building our incoming teacher base.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, that was very informative. I, I guess I either forgot or just never realized the Park Ranger connection too. You know, it makes perfect sense, so that's a nice partnership there as well, so. All right, if we could have item number eight.
Item eight, update on the status of school district facility bond.
You don't look like Dave Hentjank, but I didn't mean it that way. But welcome.
My name is Meg Jetei. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services over facilities. Madam Mayor, Chair, Councilmen and Women and Board Members, thanks for having me here. I'm filling in for Dave Hentjank. He's our Director of Facilities, but he's in Sacramento trying to get us money. So I thought I'd fill in for him while he's there. So as you all know, we passed the bond in November 2016 for a total of $193 million. That is a grand total over six years of $301 million this community has supported us. And we want to thank our community every time we can to the taxpayers because we couldn't do it without them. We have a lot of aging facilities, a lot of beautiful old facilities. But, so we appreciate all the help. Measure I is a secondary school district and that was for 100 and, it's not a school district, sorry. We're a unified school district, but we have two taxing entities, secondary and elementary, which we had to call a school improvement facility district. So our secondary schools were approved by 69.16% and that was for $135 million. And Measure J was for the elementary and this should say, this should, sorry, this should say school facility improvement, not special facility improvement district. And that was passed by 71.34% and it was for $58 million. Our Phase 1, we were funded in April 11th for $70 million. We received that in the County Treasurer on the 11th. That is our first phase. And I believe you have a list in your packet that shows what is in Phase 1. We anticipate future sales, April 2020 and Phase 3 will be April 2023. These dates may move slightly due to how well we do on getting our bonds used completely in Phase 1 for the 70 million. We need to spend those down first before we go out for Phase 2. A big, huge project, which I'm sure you're all aware of, is our Peabody Stadium project. This stadium, mentioned in your packet, is about 100 years old. It was built for $100,000, 100 years ago by Mr. Peabody. He funded it, so hence we called it Peabody Stadium. So we have some pictures of this. And Peabody is funded through multiple funding sources. We have bonds from Measure R, which was our previous bond. We have some deferred maintenance or, I'm sorry, developer fees in this. And we have, we just found out that we're going to get more money from the state of California to help out with this project too. And also Santa Barbara High Foundation has been raising money for a long time for this project. And again, we couldn't do it without all of these, the pieces of the puzzle. So what will we do with this stadium? We replace the actual stadium, which was the previous picture. This is what it's going to be and it's going to be, I believe it's still going to be concrete. And this is what we're proposing it would look like. Then we're going to replace the field. The field was not really, the field was okay. It was the track around the field that one lane would just disappear and come back up on the other side. So you couldn't really run any track meets on the field. So we had, we're planning on to replace that. And then we have a drainage, a big deal with the drainage, the storm drain in the middle of the field, which we didn't believe we were going to have, but that, you know, once you start getting into it, you find all kinds of things. So there is the field and the track. Again, so the stadium. And that's, all this project is starting, so we're replacing the stadium seating, the restrooms, the all-weather track, and then the storm drain, as I mentioned before. Some more visuals, drawings, renderings. It's going to be a beautiful sight. I want to mention that we start the day after the Walk of the Dons and we will be walking the Dons on, in 18 also. So there will be no misplacement of the Walk of the Dons. So I just want to make that really clear. Don't want that app used, right? Also, this is the stadium seating, restrooms, and all-weather track and field, storm drains and the storm drain. So the timeline on Peabody Stadium, we're awarding the contracts to the board on May 23rd. We're doing multi-prime, so the board is learning about multi-prime and how many contracts they're going to be looking at in the past couple months, getting things going here. As I mentioned, graduation, June 8th, Walk of the Dons. Notice to proceeds to contractors on June 9th. We don't waste any time, we only have a year to get this done. Notice of substantial completion is August 24th, 2018. But again, the stadiums and the Walk of the Dons and the field will be ready by August, or by the Walk of the Dons, probably June 9th or something. The project completion is supposed to be the closeout and everything is September 12, 2018. Another big project that we're looking into is the Armory. And I'm going to let my boss, Carrie Metzowka, speak to this part.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers and School Board Members, so there's a big question mark up there, but we do have emerging information. So let me give you an update and it's, it's a very fluid situation. First, want to commend at that time Assembly Member Das Williams, who sponsored the legislation, which we are all aware of. It did list either the city or the school district as having first rights to purchase. I think my first meeting with Mr. Casey was about, well, who's going to buy it? And he looked at us and said, well, we would love for you to buy it. And the passage of Measure I is what's making this possible. And so we are in negotiations with the Department of General Services. So it's really the state of California that's running the appraisal sale process. The military has used it for, gosh, decades. And the state is in, should have their appraisal done, we believe, in about two weeks. And I'm sure we're going to negotiate, but it's hard to negotiate with the state because they're not like a person, they're not like a business, they are a huge entity. But we have a really good legal team and they'll, they'll do their best. There is some environmental work to, to make sure it's all clean. And we believe we'll be under contract in roughly late June. Now, the legislation, it did sunset, it's supposed to sunset June 30th, but we've been in conversation with the state and it says, as long as we're in motion and that there's a process involved, they're not going to go look for another buyer. I think they'd have a hard time finding another buyer just because of all the land use constraints. But it's our intent to close the deal as soon as possible. I would love for us to close escrow in late summer. We have a rough timeline for that, but, you know, working again with the state agency is not the fastest experience in the world. There have been questions about the use of the Armory. I remember when I first got here, there were, you know, as we were going into the bond campaign, what were the potential uses? And, and I'll share the ones that were relayed to me by, you know, past board, current board, community members. Career technical education came up a lot. And it's a space and a facility that could lend itself to career technical end. So that was certainly one theme. Recreational use. If, have you been inside the gymnasium? It is beautiful. It's a little old. We're working through the structural integrity of it, but it is, it's a gorgeous space. It would be a gymnasium that could serve both Santa Barbara High, the junior high, and the community. We believe that there's enough land, it's a really flat piece of property, to put some other recreational resources. Boy, a general-purpose practice field, soccer field would probably be used 18 hours a day if we let it. It's four, about four acres, so it's a good-sized piece of property. And, you know, this really is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the community to, to purchase this land. And, you know, we, we have every intent to close this deal. It's situated right between two of our, you know, biggest schools. I also think it could be a resource for the east side community. It's really close to Milpus. One of my hopes is that in the conversation, that there's some kind of community center, you know, a place where the community could have a place to gather. Certainly we have our schools, but I think on weekends, it would be nice if there's a place. So as we get closer to close of escrow, we will put into motion a community stakeholder process to listen to all the voices in our community. We have some time, but we also want to put this land to good use. So every time I'm by there, I look at it and go, oh, we got to get this land acquired, get the fences down, get the helicopter off the property and, you know, turn it into something that the community can just walk onto and be proud of.
It's very exciting. It only took a few decades. See you show up and things happen, so life is good. Any questions? Is that, that was everything on your presentation, right? Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you both for the presentation. I have a question and I'm not sure who to ask regarding renewable energy. You know, a lot of government agencies are taking steps to commit to 100% renewable energies by 2030. So I'm wondering what the school district is looking at in terms of that with, with the new bonds and the ability, at least with the new structures you're building to, to more economically put in solar and other renewable sources. What's, do you guys have a plan or a strategy or a set of goals?
I'll respond to that question. In the overview of the bond program and the design of it, there, there wasn't explicit language about renewable energy. But as I toured all of our facilities, I noticed that we do not have much But as I toured all of our facilities, I noticed that we do not have much in the way of solar panels. In fact, I think we don't have any. And so Ms. Capps has certainly raised that question to staff. And so we have some initial small projects where we're going to pilot the installation of solar panels. We have to make sure that the, the return on investment is reasonable because we, we don't have unlimited funds, but I think it's an important thing for us to, to consider. It's also important from an education standpoint. I mean, the, the next generation of students, I believe, are very concerned about the environment. So we're looking at solar. I think that's probably the best place to invest in renewable energy.
And also to pair it with air conditioning for some of the schools that get really hot.
Yeah, my first, first couple of months on the job were an education about some of our challenges. You know, air conditioning is, it's nice, we have it in some limited spaces. All of our new construction, we are planning on installing it because it doesn't add that much incremental cost. But to retrofit our entire school district, it's about 2 million square feet of space. It's just too expensive. So we're going to do what we can with ventilation, condition the, the really high-traffic areas. We just have to hope for ocean breezes.
I would encourage talking to our facilities manager and, and Public Works Department. And we have some big solar panel projects. That was a public-private partnership where a private entity did the upfront capital and, are getting the revenue, but at a fixed rate, which actually has helped us save funding, save money for the electricity cost over a period of time. And so in terms of if the capital outlay being a barrier, that became, did not become a barrier. And I, I think it's worked very well for us in a few examples. So just something to think about, our motor pool, the big solar panel there, and then also at our airport as well. So just something to consider. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, along those lines, I wanted to make the district aware that the city is engaged in a, a larger discussion with the county, County of Ventura, County of San Luis Obispo, about a community energy initiative that would bring a new JPA into the energy arena in the, in the tri-counties. And that, the advantage of that is that there are significant changes in the regulatory environment that allow an entity to produce more energy on-site than that they would use. And there's, there's tariff issues now that prevent that from being economically viable when you do that. We've run into this problem in city facilities, specifically at the airport. And the, the long-term workaround is through this Community Choice Energy Initiative. And, and at some point soon, I think there's going to be an opportunity for the city to consider doing this quicker and faster on our own, rather than trying to have this very large collaboration with all these other government entities. That is probably the ideal solution, but could take a really long time to come to fruition. And that might be an opportunity for the district and the city to be thinking about that, some kind of collaboration at that point where the projects that the mayor described get even more economically viable if, if we're in charge of delivering that energy here to our local customers. So something to be aware about, maybe something we could put on a future agenda when we, when we get further down the road with that, but this is a real opportunity.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, following up on that, I'm not sure if this is a, who this is a question for, maybe Mr. Casey or maybe council members, and that is, do you have a targeted number that you're working to reach?
So I'll just, the, so the city has a sustainability subcommittee. Myself, Mr. Rouse, and Ms. Mario are on it and we just, what's today? Yesterday, right? Yesterday had a meeting where there is a proposal coming around to, to create a 100% renewable goal by certain times, but we still have to have the council discussion on that and that's coming up in June.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And then I just wanted to say thank you for the information on INJ. Obviously, we are, we're getting updates on it as a board, but every time it, we've been making progress. And so it's, it's cool to see some of the things that are now actually about to break ground. And I particularly appreciated the Armory update because as a board member, it's been worrisome. I know the state is the holdup, but I appreciate the public update so that the community can know that this is not something that we are not working on right now and that it's, it's kind of a relief to know that the state is, is promising that, that they're not going to yank it away from us if we haven't met the deadline because they haven't come forward with the information. But if you do need people to go up to Sacramento to picket or to make lots of phone calls, we are here for the district.
Great. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Did I, did I, was I just hoping you said about the Armory, the, that, that space would be an opportunity for vocational training?
Yes.
Okay. So I have contacts with the building and trades unions and they're always looking for connections to the schools and they, they have apprenticeship programs and they're trying to recruit young women and girls into the electricians union, carpenters, plumbers and pipe fitters. And so I, I would love to connect you with, with them. But I did want to just heap some praise on the school district, if I may, Madam Mayor, first of all, to, to welcome the new school board members. And maybe you don't feel new anymore, but, yeah, okay. You had a changeover and it looks like everybody's, you know, doing well. And to you, sir, welcome to the community. But I did want to acknowledge the resolution you passed expressing support and protection for vulnerable students, undocumented LGBTQ, students of all religious faiths. Thank you for that. That was a big deal and you set an example for everyone in the community. I think you all were first out, out the gate with that. In my district, I've got to know, I make it a point to meet your principals and so Veronica Binkley, I had coffee with her the other morning. Wow, Harding, in case you didn't know, has a strong community of the parents and, and the principal and the janitor is all friendly to me. I mean, it's just, it's just a wonderful community there and that's my home school. Joanne Caines, La Cumbre Junior High is just outside of my district, but my family's from the west side, go there. And, and you all know her reputation and I, and Debbie Badger is the same way. Debbie left the room, but, um, in the community and among the families, the, these women just walk on water with the way that they bring the families onto the school campus for positive activities. And then I've still to meet the principal at McKinley. That is definitely in my district. Is it Rachel Harris?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So that's on my list of things to do. And then I did want to say, just again, in terms of the undocumented students, we are continuing to have meetings with the Mexican consulate and there's a meeting tomorrow. And I'm not sure if trustee Uyoa got invited because you were at the church that night that we, so, um, yeah, it, it, the community and some of the faith-based organizations are continuing to organize to support our undocumented families in the city of Santa Barbara and the south coast. And the final thing I'll mention is your wonderful Mujercitas Girls Club at the San Marcos High School. I work with them and we're doing a self-defense training class on April 27th. And then they're going to turn around and we're going to do a bigger one on June 24th for older ladies. So we're starting with high school girls learning self-defense through the Rape Crisis Center. So I just want, also wanted to appraise Peggy Velazquez, Peggy Velazquez Ochoa, who does the Mujercitas program. And then also put in a plug, if I may, for the Ethnic Studies Now program. I do mentor some Chumash youth and they sure have their hearts in that, hoping to influence your choice of, of curriculum focus. And this, and they were coming from a point of environmental protection, cultural enrichment. And I mentor them and, and hope that you'll keep an open mind on Ethnic Studies Now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I add one comment about the environmental efforts? So this is looking, I would, I would say far down the road, but not as far as we think. The autonomous car is coming. And I spent, you know, I spent most of my career up in Silicon Valley and just, just being around that, that kind of culture of innovation. And to watch the autonomous cars driving around Mountain View, you know, with, there was a human being in there, but hands off. And as I read the articles about where the future is going, it's going to be such a disruptive force positively and I don't know if it's negatively, but I was reading a story about people are designing parking structures for use for the next five to 10 years with the idea that that's going to be reusable office space because you won't need a parking structure someday. It, it starts to really create some questions about, you know, we've got, you face land use issues, you face traffic questions. But someday, we're going to have so many fewer cars because we won't own a car. And, I mean, it's, it's far down the road, but it's, it's interesting watching this field come at us faster than I thought. And you see the players entering. I mean, Apple is quietly still in the, the business of writing the software for cars. Google's been studying it. Tesla's at it. So it's just something for us to think about. I think about all the parking spaces. Think about, you know, someday we won't have parking meters because we won't have people parking cars, we'll just call up our autonomous car. So something to think about.
I'm going to invite you to our next hearing on parking regulations when it comes to council and have you give a presentation about your experiences up in the Bay Area. But yes, we, and I saw that article as well. And as you know, we, we own quite a few parking garages and lots and city-owned property and, and the future of that is in constant conversation. So, but yeah, it's a, it's a big deal of movement. Anything else? So this last item here is just an opportunity, if anyone has ideas for future agenda items, again, it'll probably be not for another year, but certainly if there's anything in particular that is of interest right now that you want to put on the list for consideration, now's a good time to, to do so. I mean, I've heard some already about Community Choice Energy where that will be in a year. Who knows, autonomous vehicles could, but the Armory update would certainly be something. Any other items?
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
The food banks and the food pantries, does that happen all over the district? And nutrition? I would be interested in hearing about your programs at the school district.
Okay. And Mr. Dominguez?
I was curious if anyone's studying the impact of the after-school programs, either UCSB study or in-house personnel?
Okay. All right. Well, it was great hosting you here. Thank you so much and we are adjourned.